Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, December 6th, 2018. If we could first rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the one and only item on our agenda this evening. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV and it is also an audio recording that's being made by Mrs. Ruiz. Sorry, Michelle, someday I will remember that. The one and only item on our agenda tonight is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget. So at this time, we will open that hearing. First, before we introduce the members who are here tonight, I just wanted to take a minute to thank everyone who's had a part in the process so far, to thank the superintendent and the school business manager, who have worked very hard in the last week to get from last week's presentation to tonight's presentation. It's really important that going forward, we heard what everyone had to say last week. And going forward, working together collaboratively is very important to all of us. And we're really happy to have this opportunity to have everyone here tonight, so thank you. So I guess we'll start at that end with the Finance Committee. And if everyone could just take a minute to introduce themselves.
Jerry Stefanski. Dominic Camerano.
Bernie Fidgen.
Dave Hurd.
Ellis Bailey.
Mike Flaherty, School Committee.
Laurie Spear, School Committee.
Joyce Bakayaki, School Committee.
Rebecca Pratt, School Committee.
Emily Robert, School Committee.
Okay, and again, thank you to everyone who's here tonight. So at this point, we will turn it over to the superintendent and the school business manager.
Good evening. Tonight, the budget presentation will take this word about the process. When we can put together this year's budget, my budget subcommittee, we decided that what we would show you last week was the entire request from the principals and the directors without the need of adjustments. And that's a little bit different than what we've done in past years. After we met on last week, we were given the direction to go back, adjust the budget, look at revenues, and then tonight, we will be presenting the final results of our work. So, we're going to open tonight. Susan Mullins, the Business Manager, will walk you through the process. And if you have questions or want to have any questions which you may have. And if the people that are watching, if you have questions, please feel free to contact us. We're more than happy to answer any questions that you ask. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So we went through some of these slides last week. This is the Wareham Public School Vision. These were the strategic questions that we had assessed out. These were the Wareham School Committee budget priorities. A lot of these slides will be similar, but I want to take you through the journey or the story that we wanted to get to place where I tonight. There's some information on student enrollment, this obviously is likely increased year-on-year. Several slides on enrollment here. And then we have a slide on staffing, which is composed of FTEs from the EPM's testing board. So it does not include cafeteria, the studio, and clinical. So initially, we presented the FY '20 budget, and this is what the breakdown was. It was $31,179,142. It was a 7.43% increase or a $2.1 million request. As Dr. Shaver said, we put forward all our requests from all our district administrators and team leaders to show the true story of what we needed and what was being requested. So this shows the breakdown. We had the approved budget from FY '19. We had salary increases, a roll-up cost of 1.2. We had savings and non-digital tuition of about $330,000. We had increased staffing requests, which was about $568,000. And then all of the supplies and material requests were additional $677,000. That's what made the $31 million of a 7.43% increase. This slide just from our district payments showing you the decrease in tuitions. These were the staffing requests that the principals and directors put forward. Here's a summary by major account. And it contains 17, 18, 19, and then projected 20. This is just the presentation summary of the steps that we've taken to get where we are today. And now we talk about the adjusted budget. So we looked at revenues, we looked at reductions, and we looked at all great and ways of how we can make this budget work without appropriate request of a 1.4% increase. Additional revenue sources to offset our budget requests. So we looked deep into our buckets, and we have some anticipated revenues yet. So the town appropriation, we're anticipating about $200,000, at least a minimum of $200,000. It may be more, maybe less, we don't know yet. Town name vote is also anticipated, which is the $400,000 in free cash or capital money. We've had conversations with the town administrator. We've got to have Medicaid reimbursements, and we've come to an agreement with him that we will get at least a portion of what our Medicaid reimbursements are. So for this year and next year combined, it's $100,000. And then our FY '19 circuit breaker. Right now, we have not need to use any of it, so we are hoping to roll almost all of it forward into next year, which is $700,000. And then we'd like to request the Special Ed Stabilization Fund as $200,000. And we'll put there probably some things like this when we come to budget crunch times and we need the money to move the district forward. I would like to just talk a little bit about the request and just for your information. The town meeting vote, we requested $400,000. That's what we work with capital. And so the last several years, we pulled capital out of our budget. And we have worked with the town when we received it, then we do the capital. For instance, the town meeting that voted $40,000 this year, we're buying textbooks, HVAC put in, and doing some other repairs that we've not been able to do because the money's been pulled out. One of the pieces that we also work with in special ed, we have Medicaid reimbursement. And that comes to us from the state. We have a service that helps us figure out the cost, and it's a percentage above what we're spending. And then that money is reimbursed. Right now, we anticipate about $382,000 will come back to the town for this year's Medicaid. What I understand is there's been about 330,000 budgeted, so there's an excess of $50,000. We're also paying costs to have this done, and it's really, not only are we paying a service to figure anything, our staff are performing the duties. So we would like to have at least $50,000 of that. We understand that it's been budgeted, but the extra we could use. The same thing for the following year, we anticipate roughly the same amount, and we would likely $50,000 back. And when you combine the vote, that's $100,000. So that's how we got that number. One of the things that we receive money for in special education are services above a threshold. And that's called circuit breaker. It changes from year to year depending on what we have, what the needs are, but then also what the state is going to reimburse us. And in the packet, you'll see what we've received in circuit breaker over the past several years. One of the things that we can do with grants is spend in the next fiscal year. So we're going to be receiving this $700,000 now in this current year. We hope not to use it, and then we will apply it toward next year. This year, we received $787,000, I believe. And if there's any possible way that we can also save the $87,000 from paying tuitions and other special education costs, we would apply it to our budget for next year. And then Susan explained about the stabilization fund. So that's how we came up with the revenue that we believe that we would have been able to apply it to our budget for next year. The whole change is the reductions to the budget. So we went through, had some deep conversations. Some of the 11 FTEs were put on the list as reduction or the whole change. You can see them outlined here. Total reductions is a savings of about $316,000. So when you take our original request of $31 million, you add the additional revenue, or you, I shouldn't say add, subtract, apply, and then after post-reduction, you come up with adjusted budget for FY '20 of $29,262, $246,000, which is more palatable. And this is usually the point where you first see the information. So you don't typically see the 7.43% increase, but you wanted to see the whole story. So the budget pathway, the present budget initially was the $31,179,000. And now the present budget is $29,262,246,000. And this pretty much includes all requested information the department has asked for, except for the things that you saw for reduction. Our next steps, budget adoption, a vote by the school committee. And then we continue forward with meeting the town officials, reviewing our budget by school leads, and then heading into reviewing our capital request. We continue with capital, and we have put it to home goes that need some upkeep and maintenance on that to a hearing. It's just a matter of a four day. I just want to thank everyone that's been vocal regarding school staff for their input into this budget. There's a lot not put into it. And if there's any questions, please let us know, comments. Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Or, so you talked about the circuit breaker and saving it until next year. So I just wanted to point out that that is something that you have, that's not something new. Correct me if I'm wrong. And you, and it's just due to the unpredictability of the cost of special education? That you perhaps would have had to use it this year, but hoping not to.
So we had a reduction, we had some students that graduated. We had several students who had to go away to the Wareham Public Schools and attending house schools. Revenue's out, like total savings and this spent tuition, which is why they have to touch the circuit breaker.
But keeping it till next year, that's not, that's not something new? It's something that we've done in the past?
We have tried to do that in the past, and we had some budget difficulties. It was two years ago, we tried to use additional circuit breaker to help offset our costs. And so it kind of put us behind the eight ball for the next two years. So we're now just to the point where we can hold back the circuit breaker and apply it to the next fiscal year, which that's our goal. And so we just talked about the dedication for special education, when dividing partners, if we're able to bring that or maybe save this. I would say that from here to the end of our school year, if we got the students who did, that's a very high-cost student, we could need to tap some of this money, which could bring us back to how are we going to make it balance again? So we're kind of rolling the dice so steep. The other piece is, we're going to have circuit breaker money coming in next year. Our goal is not to use any of the money next year, but to hold it for the following year budget.
Question? Where does this circuit breaker money sit? Is it in a revolving account? And secondly, who determines when to use it?
Yes, it does sit in a grant account. And when we're planning the budget, one of the tasks our special education director does is to look at what the out-of-district cost, what the other costs that we have in special education, and then how is she going to apply those funds? So it's really a balancing act in how we decide to use it. If the need's there, and we do not have funds in the LEA, then we must use it.
So the special education director decides when to use the fund?
Yeah, she works and she decides when to use it. Certainly, she runs it by others.
Okay. I have a question on the circuit breaker, the historical. In fiscal '18, there were 31 students eligible, and the eligible expenses were 2.4 million. Then in fiscal '19, the students went to 41, which is a 33% increase. But the eligible expenses only went to 2.8 million. So I guess I don't understand where you got one-third more students, but the eligible expenses did not go up by a third.
Do I turn the microphone or am I talking?
Yes.
This is Melissa Bay, she's our Director of Student Services.
So it's not always necessarily the amount of students, it's the type of services that they're receiving. So we get reimbursed based on how much above the state average is spent on a particular service. So we do have a lot of very unique services in our district that aren't offered in other places, like orientation and mobility for the visually impaired and blind, that are not necessarily high cost, but those students do receive service. So even though it might just be a couple hours a week of service, we count them under the number of students eligible, because that's an eligible service. But the reimbursement isn't going to be as much as if I have to send a student to a very specialized, let's say, social emotional school that costs $150,000 a year, then our reimbursement is going to be higher. So it's not always how many students, it's what type of service each student is receiving that then determines how much money we give back. Does that make sense?
It does. Another question. On the, where you show the capital of $400,000, was that in your original proposal as a operating expense? And then you took it out of the operating expenses and decided then to make it capital?
Yes.
And would you, would you explain this Medicaid reimbursement? What type of individual is eligible for Medicaid?
I'm just going to stay up here. So any student who receives services that are deemed by the state as Medicaid-eligible services, we have to receive permission from the parents to share that information so that the school district can get reimbursed, actually, in this district, the town can get reimbursed. So all of our staff that is eligible, that are Medicaid-eligible would be speech and language pathologist and assistants, physical therapy, or occupational therapy and occupational therapy assistants, our vision teacher, our vision specialist, our board-certified behavior analysts, our school adjustment counselors, our nurses. So anybody who's providing services that are outside the academic realm, that are specialized services, can bill the state for the hours that they spend with students. And it's actually a lot of work. It's a lot of training that they have to go to. Every month, we have to report to the state, and then the money comes to the town. So that's what Medicaid is.
So you have someone on your staff that does the billing?
We actually, everybody on staff does their own billing and reports to the state. And then we have an agency that puts all the money together that we also fund, so that we can get the most money possible.
And then the money goes to the town or goes to the school?
Goes to the town.
Town, okay.
And that differs across the state. There's some districts that give it to the school, because the school does the work. And then there's other districts that give it to the town, and then there's other districts that split it. So that's just how Wareham is. Okay.
Yes. I'm just looking at page 12 and 22 of our packets. Page 12, the staffing requests, I understand what that is. But the reductions on page 22, and there's like similar items on both of them, can you just explain what that is?
What were the pages again? I'm sorry.
12 and 22.
So page 12 is the budget by major account? So there's certain major accounts that we have to report by?
I'm sorry, Susan, I think she's talking, you're talking about the end up, Mary?
Yeah.
The staffing request.
Yes. Yeah, the staffing request. I get that, like, why is it on reductions with similar items? Is it going from one school to another, or?
No, I think this, I think this is what you're asking.
Like, for instance, like foreign language teachers.
Right, because we're going to reduce them. The first page showed the request that administrators had made. The page 22 shows reductions that we would not move forward with to add for the next school year.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So clarifying, I'm sorry. So when it says reductions on the two permanent, say, or say, two foreign language teachers, we're not cutting two foreign language teachers, we're just not adding the two foreign language teachers that had been requested.
Correct.
Thank you.
This budget does not have any staff, current staff reductions in the budget. The only reductions would be for potential new staff.
But we are keeping some of the requests for more staff?
Yes.
To clarify on that, if we look at the reductions from central office, that's a position that does exist today, correct?
Yes, but it's, the person is not being eliminated because of staff cuts.
Okay. But that position will go away?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Sorry, I'm having trouble seeing everyone.
I have a question on staffing. So how many total FTEs are you asking for?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, okay. And the salary roughly on that five and a half?
It's a reduction of about $316,000.
I think you'd like to know the staff that we're adding, what would their salary cost be? We haven't, I don't know if we added it up, but what we'll do is we'll add it and then share it with you.
So you say five at $50,000, just for sake of argument?
Yeah, that's a little bit more difficult because they're not, they're not full-time, they're full-time positions, but we're putting a little bit here and a little bit here to expand it.
Okay, so let's say five at 50 is 250. That's the schools, and that's the direct expenses. Now, the impact on a town, however, is another 25% or 20 to 25%.
It may be.
In like-kind expenses.
Right.
I just wanted to get that out there, that it's just, you're showing 100%, but there's another 20 to 25% that may impact the town in like-kind.
You could, it could, but some of the people were just expanding the position. They're already here. So we're not bringing in new people with some of these positions.
Okay.
So the additional staff, our original request was to add 11 staff. Seven of that 11 were in special ed areas. Now, we're asking for five and a half. We didn't eliminate or reduce any requests for the special ed areas. And if to, the total cost was $879 for the 11, and then it was a reduction of three. So it's about $500,000 for those five and a half people.
Yes. Chairman Slaven prepared a statement for me to read in the record. Please refrain from any booing or cat calls until I'm done. Statement from Alan Slaven, current chair, Board of Selectmen. I have asked this to be read into the records and that all content is my thoughts only. This is not a statement from the Board of Selectmen. We continue to struggle financially to maintain the needs of our community. Our revenue streams are insufficient to make meaningful progress. We need to revisit our approach, how we fund the town's needs. We have to look at an overall approach, not the existing town versus school. Take all sources of funds and come up with a percentage split is one possible idea. There are other possibilities. School labor contracts have to fall in line with the other town departments. I believe school teachers, not administration, have been underpaid throughout history. This needs change. The key words are sustainability and quality of work. Now to 2019, 2020, the budget the school is asking for a $2.1 million increase. The funds are not there for this. What departments are you asking we take this from? Way back in 2008, 2009, capital planning listed three large projects that would be needed and the question of how to fund them. They were and are, one, mine for a school repair replacement, town net share 20 to 25 million. Deacon's school repair replacement, town net share 20 to 25 million. Three, police station, public safety building complex, 7 to 10 million. We have passed an override debt exclusion to achieve numbers one and two. Next is number three. This needs to take priority, including increasing the staffing of 12 to 18 new police officers. The existing facility is inadequate, we can no longer wait. The point I'm putting forth is simply, we cannot give everyone what they want. We have to sequence in pieces and parts. The school increases will need to wait their turn. Municipal maintenance and community center are just some of the next items in line. We hope that the governor or legislature does finally revamp the formulas for Chapter 70 funding for the schools this coming year. It would increase funding to our school district. The state has completed a study saying the formula is broken. Also, New Bedford and Brockton have filed a lawsuit against the state on this issue. I believe Brockton did this once before and won. Our school district should join this suit. Best, Alan Slaven. You know, those are Alan's comments. I have to say that I know in the past, the town administrator has talked with the prior business manager for the schools, I believe he's also spoken with you, about the possibility of doing a revenue sharing agreement, so that as new money comes into the town, it's divvied up. I don't know if that's been brought to the school committee as a proposal or not. I know it hasn't been brought to the selectmen yet as a proposal. But I do think it's something that should be worked on, because I think it will give the parties, as they go through each budget cycle, more certainty about what they can expect to work with after they get to town meeting. Town meeting typically doesn't play around with the budget too much, as we know. The one time we did have some, some interesting things going on with the Finance Committee, we actually killed town meeting right then and there and came back in six weeks so that we didn't have two competing budgets on the floor. That was in 2013. Since then, the budget that has been presented at town meeting, I think with marginal exceptions, has always passed as it was presented. I know in the past, different chairman of the Board of Selectmen have handled the school budget request, which I think for the last three years has typically been a $2 million increase, in different ways. I know Selectman Whiteside chose to meet multiple times with members from the school committee, with the town administrator, the superintendent, the business manager, and they sort of hashed all those things out. Last year, I took a look at our town charter and saw that the budget that goes to town meeting is the budget that the town administrator presents. Interestingly enough, there's a conflict with state law there, which says that the school committee number goes into the budget. But yet, the town charter is also something that is passed by the state legislature. And in instances where there are conflicts between the town charter and the general laws, the town charter will take precedence. So last year, that was the number that did go forward. I do know that there was quite a bit of work back and forth between the town administrator and Mr. McMillan and also the superintendent to achieve a number. I know that there was some last minute money that came in, and I think we were able to bump the schools up a couple hundred thousand beyond originally what had been proposed by the town administrator. But it just seems that, you know, every year, you know, we see a sort of a wants budget from the school department that comes forward. And I understand all that. Believe me, we get ground on by the department heads on our side to try to provide them with, with more money so that they can hire more people or get better equipment to do their jobs and so on and so forth. If anybody paid attention to the selectance meeting this week, we just had the two police lieutenants come in and ask for 12 more police officers on behalf of the chief. That's not going to be feasible in the current budget either. So I really think it's time for, rather than asking for the sun, moon, and the stars and then trying to work down from there, I really think it's best if we come up with a formula, we agree to it, and we just stick to it going forward. I think it takes a lot of the back and forth out of it. I think it takes a lot of the town versus, townside versus the schools out of it. I think it gives certainty to both parties going forward, and that's what I would suggest that we do going forward.
Thank you, Peter. So, I mean, what I would say to that is, you know, we did hear what Alan was here last week, we heard what he had to say. And I think just by what's been presented tonight, I mean, it's evident that we are, you know, we are listening and we, and the superintendent and everyone has been very open to conversations with the selectmen, with the town administrator. And that's how it'll be going forward.
Thank you.
Is there any other question? Mike?
To Mr. Titlebaum, so I'm sorry, I know he ended up reading that from Alan, and I just wonder if I inferred correctly. If you don't want to answer, I totally respect that. But if I heard correctly, it sounded like that because we found revenue with the debt exclusion for the, to replace Minus and Deacon's, that now we need to have some certain corresponding dollars taken from our budget to fund these other projects?
Well, I don't think your budget is going to be cut from what it is this year. I don't think he's implying that at all. But I think what he's saying is, is that the town does have other priorities and needs.
And I would recommend, and I would recommend they go for a debt exclusion to meet those needs like we did.
I think he was talking strictly of day-to-day budgetary needs as opposed to large-scale capital items. I think we all know that if a public safety complex is going to come forward, it's going to require either a different kind of financing or debt exclusion. I don't know if that's something that would be bonded out over 20 years, for example. That's certainly a possibility, depending on how much of, how much borrowing you want to tie up in one project.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think the issues brought up by Mr. Slavin, the chairman of the selectmen, is something we should seriously consider and I would suggest move forward with. It would be much easier in planning your budgets if you knew ahead of time what you have to deal with. And based on the agreement between two parties, it would certainly help the budget process. And you would be able to go through with the presentation of, and spend less than weeks trying to come up with an issue that makes your department, the school department, run more smoothly. Excuse me. As far as the finance committee is concerned, it was sure would make our work much easier if ever all parties agreed. And I would more than support going forward with that recommendation. We've done it in other communities I've been involved with, and it certainly has allowed the process to go forward much more smoothly than we're trying to do right now. We're all going through a lot of angst in trying to balance our budget and what the consequences are going to be. And I think it won't reduce that angst, but it still certainly will make the process much smoother.
Well, as Mr. Titlebaum mentioned, that has not been presented to the school committee either as, you know, as a proposal. And at this point, we are two weeks away from voting on our budget. So I'm not sure if that timeframe allows. But I mean, as we've all been saying, as I've been saying all night, we're certainly open to whatever conversation and collaboration with the town. But we have to keep in mind our timeframe.
Well, I think right now we're in the midst of the budget process. It would be inappropriate to try and adapt, adopt that kind of policy. But I think going forward would be in our best interests in the long term.
Yeah, just further to that point, you know, and I'll speak directly to your principal and sort of your department heads within the school district. That would make your lives a lot easier because then you wouldn't have to write three or four budgets.
Yes, I have a question. If I'm reading this right, our student enrollment is down. So basically with the budget increase, then the cost per student, education per student is actually up. Has anyone ever done that percentage or figure?
We have. I don't have that slide here. I believe we had a per pupil slide in one of our previous presentations. 14,000, 14 and change per student.
And it's hard to actually read the student enrollment drop. Do you have an exact number? I mean, the graph is a little, a little broad.
I'd have to go back and look.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Excuse me. What did you say the cost per student would be?
You know, I.
Based on the projected budget?
We, I don't think we've done the projected budget. That's something that we're all working on. We just have been trying to get to this number. We can have that for you.
So the population, the school population is somewhere around almost 2,200 students. Is that correct? 2,190 something? So I'm sure we could get a number based upon what you're asking for. And is that what the, is that what the cost per student is? Is it per the town budget per year divided by the number of students that we have? Or does it include what we get for grants and other income to the town or to the school?
I think it's based on the formula that the Department of Ed compiles different, different pieces to come up with those numbers because they have their state average, which is about 15,000 and change per student. I'm not really sure what makes up the whole formula, but it's a combination of things.
To his, to his point, I think, I think the per pupil cost, isn't it just based on the LEA? Doesn't take into account grants and revolvers and all that stuff?
I believe it takes into account everything.
You think so? Okay. Okay, so as part of.
Mike, go ahead.
So, so Ms. Bakayaki and I were part of the budget advisory committee, and so we're pretty intimate with this document. But I'd just like to hear it from my colleagues on the school committee if there's any surprises that they saw here that they'd like to talk about. Good, bad, indifferent?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I was just looking for feedback from anyone else on the committee besides you and I.
Excuse me. Susan, in the presentation that you made about two weeks ago, you had a per pupil comparison.
I thought, correct.
Would you like to go over that for us?
I don't have it in front of me. I don't have that presentation.
Would you like a copy of it?
Sure.
Well, all right, you could perhaps explain how we compare with other towns.
So basically what I did is I went on the Department of Ed website, and I looked at some of the surrounding towns. I'm not sure what Wareham compares themselves with. So I kind of picked and chose the ones close by that seemed to be similar. So if you look at Bourne, for instance, Bourne, the most recent that the DESI is reporting is 1617. So Bourne's per pupil was 15,601 dollars per student. Carver was 14,927 per student. Middleboro was 14,804 per student. Sandwich was 16,234 per student. And Wareham was 15,806 per student. The state average is actually 16,014. So we're not at the bottom, we're not at the top.
I think I would like, when you look at the per pupil cost, you also have to look at the needs of the students. And because we have a higher population of special ed students, our needs are much greater than some surrounding districts. I think we're at 26, 27%. About a third of our population is special education. And because of that, the IEP drives the services. And if students need something for their education, we're paying that additional cost. If I was in a district that had student, special ed population at 14%, my student cost would be much less. So I think when you just look at those numbers without looking what's behind the numbers, you get a false sense. And with the amount of special ed students we have in our district, that's a pretty low number.
Are you saying most of the towns around us have less of special needs students than Wareham does?
Yes.
The state average is 17%. And right 26 or 27?
No, 26.
26, 27. So what you're saying is you can't just take our budget and divide it by 2,195, our enrollment, and come up with a number. That's not going to be an accurate number.
Well, you could, but then you also have to look at what's behind it.
Well, right, right. I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a meaningful number.
No, it's a meaningful number, but you have to just throw the caveats in with the special ed and just say.
Well, it's a meaningful number, but when you, not when you're comparing it to a number that wasn't calculated in the same way. I mean, they're taking data from the DESI website. You don't know how that was calculated. So to compare.
It was divided by number of students.
Oh, you don't, we don't know that.
Well, yeah, but you know, one thing, and we could do this, and if you would take, let's just say a surrounding town, know what their special ed number is, if you would pull that out, if you would take to what ours is, and then you would divide their students left into their budget, I would think it would be interesting to see what the comparable figure would be. Because we need to measure likes. And right now, this kind of number measures it's not equal. And so for us to make a statement without it being equal is very difficult. We might do that just to see what we can get.
What, what just, the number that stuck out in what, and everything that's just been said in the past couple of minutes is that we have 26% special education population versus a state average of 17%. What steps will the school department be doing to try to reduce the special ed number going forward? And how does the proposed new school fit into that?
Well, you know, one thing that we do is to meet the needs of all our students. So we start very early and to provide the students the skills they need to be successful. There, when you look at the student population from pre-K through, let's just say, a freshman in high school, the students that are, that are making success are the ones that have been with us the whole time. The places that we're having the most difficulty are our move-ins. We have absolutely no control on who comes into our district, who the Department of Children and Families put into our district, or, and we must educate them. It's non-negotiable. And so short of us putting a lock on our registration door, there's nothing we can do. Our job is to service all kids when they come to us. And we take it very seriously. Now, would we like to change some of it? Absolutely. But we can't. And we know those students all have needs that we're going to meet.
Can I just add to what, sorry. Can I just add to what you're saying, Kim? Because I get a little frustrated with this sometimes when special needs comes up all the time and stuff like that. And we, yeah, we have, we have a difficult culture or whatever around here, but we have to do well despite of that. We have a problem. When I was growing up, I didn't know anyone that had no parents. My kid, who's a senior at Wareham High School, has dozens of kids that have no parents. It's a problem. It's not a school problem. They're doing the best that they can with that. So I just want people to understand, like, with special education, we have a lot of kids that need a little extra help, and that's our job, so.
And, you know, with the opioid crisis, we have a number of students who are being raised by grandparents, by other relatives. The social emotional needs that have come in our district that we deal with on a daily basis has soared in the last five, 10 years. We have counselors, we have social workers, we have behaviors. We bring in counselors from other sources to help support our students and meet their social emotional needs. It's a growing problem. It's not just Wareham, but it's across the nation. And we're having to face, our students are facing things that no student should ever have to deal with. And for them to learn on top of everything else that they're having to handle at a young age is extremely difficult. And so the services that our teachers are providing, we're retooling them of how you deal with students that are trauma, trauma students. It's something new in education, and we're doing the very best that we can. It's slow, but we're working very hard at it. The other thing is, you know, we're running information about students that attend preschool. We know that students attend preschool do significantly better in the early years, and that foundation is stronger. Now, I can't, we cannot mandate that everybody attends preschool. Would we like to? Absolutely. Because it gives our students a leg up. A couple of years ago, our students entering kindergarten were 60% behind the state average. And so we've put some pieces in place in the elementary. And now we're starting to look like most schools in the Commonwealth at that early, early level. So we are working on how do we address our students' needs. It's just not fast enough.
Is there anyone else?
I think another issue that we need to address, and hopefully you've addressed in your budget, but we're losing 1.4 million with school choice. If we had those students, it's approximately around 210 students that are going elsewhere. If you can attract them back, that's money that comes back to your budget. And is anything within this budget that addresses those kinds of issues or that particular issue?
You know, we're working very hard to keep the programs in place that our students need to be successful. Now, I cannot, you know, one of the things that we're looking at is maintaining discipline in the buildings. It's come significantly a long way in the last several years. We're looking to address the social emotional needs of our students so we don't have students acting out and disturbing. acting out and disturbing students when they learn. The other piece is, we have dual enrollment. We have advanced placement courses. We have ID courses. We're working very hard to keep our athletic programs that attract students. We know we need to maintain our facilities. We know we need to invest some money in our buildings. You know, we feel extremely grateful for the town for supporting the new school. We believe that would be huge in helping to change the culture. But I will tell you that our staff work extremely hard every day to meet our students' needs. Our class sizes are low. I'm very proud of what our staff does. And I really think that people, before they choose to school choice their student out, should come and see what's happening in the Wareham schools. And I'm not so sure they would be leaving. We also talk to people that have chosen to leave, and we've asked them why. Now, there's a variety of answers, but we've also invited students back. And amazingly enough, we do get some students coming back. We just would like to have a few more.
Yeah, according to the stats, you've got about, excuse me, 40 some odd students, school choice, choosing Wareham School, which bring in around 300,000. So there's 1.1 million that we're, we're losing that we desperately need back.
And I agree with you. You know, we also know that there's a population of students out there that need some alternative types of programs. But with those alternative, those alternative programs, they also need to have opportunities to receive some kind of a certification so when they leave our schools, they're job-ready. So we've been working with the Greater New Bedford workforce, and we're getting ready to roll in some career programs in January to start offering to students the training. So when they leave Wareham, they'll be ready to go on the job. So we recognize there's some adjustments to be made, and we're starting to make them.
Thank you, Dr. Shaverhood. As I said at the last meeting, it's an exciting time to be part of Wareham School Committee, to be part of the positive atmosphere that is happening in all of the schools. And I really think that that is going to translate into more students staying, less students leaving. Emily?
Yeah, I feel like a lot of the younger kids don't really know about the high school enough, and I feel like all of the alternative options are, like, broadcasted, like, across, like, and that's all they see. And, but I feel like a good thing is that the eighth graders, they're now in the high school. So they'll finally get to see what we really are over there, because they, they don't know. And I actually talked to a lot of eighth graders, and a lot of them, like, a huge percent that wouldn't be like this if they had stayed at the middle school, are planning on staying at the high school because they see this isn't that bad. This is pretty cool here, which is really awesome, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else?
I believe that after you have a chance to go through the budget, you might like to speak with us in further detail. We'd be happy to come to your meetings and answer any questions. If you have some specific, if you could let us know, we'll be happy to get you the information. And are we almost done?
I believe we are.
Okay. So, my exciting news. Today, I received the call from MSBA inviting us to the meeting on Wednesday, which is the official invitation, which means it is now, we will receive a, hopefully a positive vote on Wednesday. And they just wanted to make sure that we knew we could come. They would love to see us. So I took that as a wonderful sign. So we're, we're on our way.
Thank you. So if no one else has anything else to share, I'll just repeat what I said at the beginning, that we look forward to discussing this more, to collaboration. As Dr. Shaverhood said, you know, anyone who has any questions or wants to discuss it further, we're happy to do that. If no one has anything else, we'll close the hearing and ask for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
I didn't hear who did.
Aye.
No, thank you.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.